It is now six o'clock and I will call to order our council study session. First up is the tower lease file discussion.
All right. So as, as I'm sure you all remember, we've been talking about the, the, the tower lease file for, oh, a couple of months now. We've had, we've had presentations by both Tower Point and American Tower representatives. As well as we had our presentation from our contact at Wayne State University to try and help us go through some of these other details and nuances that many of us are not necessarily aware of or privy to not being in that, in that field. And so really it's just, this is just a time for you all to discuss the different proposals that we've received. I have talked to American Tower. I did talk to American Tower to confirm that they're okay with allowing a little bit more, more time for council to discuss and digest the information. And, you know, obviously they would like to see this happen as soon as possible, but they are, they are certainly willing to, to give us a little bit more time to, or willing to give you all some more time to discuss and make the best decision possible. So like I said, this is your opportunity.
So where? I, I think I've asked, but were, so were you guys able to find the, the contracts that came up in discussion previously that made a big, I guess, uproar?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what, well, I know what, excuse me, I know was when I provided to the council about four weeks ago in terms of agreements that I had, I, I did go back through and I, we have a number of, be amazed how many filed folders I have on different cell towers, different co-located agreements within the cities. To the best of my knowledge, the original agreement, the original agreement with what was SBA Tower at the time, that everyone should have, that's the original one. That agreement was amended and extended in 2006 when they relocated the tower based on the development of the curves. So that agreement was extended again, the only changes were the location and then there was, there were four additional five-year extension. So the original five-year term plus a total of 40 years of renewal, five years. So that, at least, we're actually still under, under contract with them until 2043, about 2023. There's an additional 20 years on that lease.
So, oh, go ahead. No, I was, so I was curious because he, he kept asking, so where's the other money coming from? So that is all accounted for in those contracts or?
So that's every, each provider, so this, this agreement is just with, for the tower, the ground lease with the tower and the structure, the structure and the ground.
Right.
Equipment. There, there was, the city did have a separate lease agreement with AT&amp;T directly. They actually added, I believe it was a 20-foot addition or something on the top of that tower so that they could, because they didn't want to co-locate with the existing American Towers predecessors. So there's, there was a separate agreement with AT&amp;T that at one point we had, next home was on both that tower and the DPS tower and we knew that was, Metro PCS was, had a co-located agreement on the Sunnybrook Tower. So there were at one point, and there are still three on there. I don't, I don't know which three they are, but there are still three users on that tower. So we should, we should be getting revenue from, not only from American Tower, from those providers that, that are located on that tower.
So in the future, so if we change anything up, do you think we should know who those blessings are or?
Yeah, that's part of the agreement. If they, if they change, we, they're required to sign a co-located agreement with the city. Like I said, those, I, I don't know who the current providers are. We, I'd have to sit down with him and go over the revenue to see what.
Well, on the Sunnybrook Tower, we have, I want to say T-Mobile and also, just a minute, just drew a blank here. T-Mobile and Dish are on the, Dish Wireless are on that tower. And then we get the, and then on the Sunnybrook Tower, we're getting a check from AT&amp;T, or actually which comes from SBC.
Crown Castle.
Crown Castle, yes. It comes from Crown Castle and that has two, two amounts that come on that check.
That's, that's AT&amp;T probably need to be separated.
Correct.
And then there should be, like I said, Metro PCS and I think T-Mobile may have assumed next though.
Yes.
That, that may be the co-locators. And that would be, and then either Metro PCS or Dish, but I don't have anything for Dish.
We have, well, that's on the check that it comes in under, comes in on Dish and T-Mobile. I think it's been this whole year, at least. Because it hasn't gone down at all.
And it may, it may just have been an assumption that for PCS abilities, but I'm not sure.
Let me ask some questions.
Yes.
Process here, because I believe at the, you know, at the last meeting, I thought we made a group decision to wait for the attorneys to look into the contracts so that we could see if there was any other additional information out there. In the meantime, I found AT&amp;T, SBC Tower Holdings, care of AT&amp;T Property Tax Department. They're paying taxes to us. There's three different tax bills that go out and they're paying taxes on all three of those. But anyway, we made the decision to wait for, to see what was in Scott's file. And in the meantime, I'm not sure why Mr. Kanter is in contact with Tower Point during all this negotiating behind the chain. I don't know that isn't anything that we discussed. Is that something that just happens here? I'm not familiar with the, with the process, but I was very surprised to see his email communications going back and forth with Tower Point, who is trying to sell us something. The guy offered to give us copies of our contracts. And I don't know, being in business, that is a, that's not, I'm not familiar with doing business in that way where we're going to someone who's trying to sell us something to get us information that we should have, particularly that we're ready to be making a decision about selling anything. So what is the process? He, you know, he appears to be in the middle of everything and I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
Councilwoman Miller, I, the gentleman called me originally and I have not had much of any of this tower information because Cheryl was on it before this. And then the gentleman called me. I thought he was actually with the other tower company when I first started talking to him. Bruce talked to the gentleman that came in from Wayne State and he, we had talked to him and he knew more about what was going on through the guy, the gentleman at Wayne State and that. So I'm the one that asked Bruce if he would call this guy from Tower Point to find out what he was talking about, what, because he was talking to the guy from Wayne State. So I thought maybe they could, Bruce could figure it out better than I could at that time. So that's why Bruce got involved in the middle because of the gentleman from, from Wayne State. I thought with Bruce talking to him and trying to get information on these towers, that if he talked to Tower Point, he could probably put that information together better than I could. And that's how that happened.
And then Patrick from Wayne State had recommended that we contact a consultant, not an old third-party vendor who was trying to sell us something. I'm just wondering why between our last meeting and this meeting, you know, is this going on March 29th, actually, this last week? Where Bruce was giving you two hours, talking about contracts and all that. Is that how things have done? That he's not a negotiator or, you know, what, what does the process look like?
He's just trying to bring the information to the table for council to discuss. He's just trying to bring the information here so you guys can discuss it. And he's trying to get it to you guys, is what he's doing. That's my understanding. He's not trying to negotiate anything with anybody. He's just trying to, oh, listen, sorry. He's trying to follow up with the information to get it to council. And that's what the emails are to give you guys information of what he's, what they have discussed with him. I've been included on the emails. I was also on one of the calls with this Tower Point.
Oh, I'm hearing that's the same. Call it to American Tower, to their company, vendor, Tower, Tower Point.
American Tower and Tower Point.
I know, American Tower, but Tower Alliance was one of them.
Yes, yes, I was just gonna say, please just make sure everyone has their mics on.
Tower Alliance is the one.
That is the American Tower, Tower, they're doing it for, American Tower, Tower Alliance is doing it for them. And they have given us their, their quotes, their demand, what they're asking for.
Okay, okay. It just, it just seems like there's exceptional treatment that's being given to one hand or another. And you're not even sure what that's like. And it did seem, I, I'm just used to staff doing things that lack corrective information.
Excuse me, I just gotta, pardon me, I don't mean to interrupt. I, I just found another comment that they're having a hard time hearing council speak. So I, maybe, maybe move your mic closer to, closer up onto your, your shirt collar. Thank you. I just want to make sure that you're heard.
Yeah, I guess. So is that the way that things, that things go, that one person?
I think in a fully staffed administration, the, the administration would probably handle that. But given the severe understaffing and work over the current interim administrators, I think there will be for help anyone that hasn't did it. Now, this isn't the first time that the city has listed its office to buy out contracts and treaty agreements. This comes up every five or six years, typically the administrator handles it as handled in the past. We get, for lack of an administrative, that's where Bruce is stepping up or something else, finding information to negotiate, signing contracts that ultimately prompt the council.
It just seemed it was a little, information's been a little slanted towards, towards the one company. And that, and my, I may be totally off, but that is something that residents and other companies could also, also surmise for the situation. But it's, it's just hard to, to follow the rules that seem to continue to break when I'm not really sure what they are. Just wanted clarification on that and if there's something writing somewhere.
I mean, I don't want to hear, I don't want you to want, I think you're, you're dissatisfied with most things that go on here. And then you say you don't have an opportunity for a voice. So we're giving you an opportunity, we're giving you the floor. What is it that you would like, how would you like to handle this?
I, I would like everyone to get information at the same time and make decisions objectively and responsibly. And make sure that we are spending taxpayer dollars wisely and making decisions for the benefit of the residents. That's what I'm asking for.
How, what has transpired, included that? That's how, how is, how is what that's developed? How is this question disinformation?
I, I just said, these emails going back and forth and, oh, you know, we'd be happy to give you copies of contracts. Where, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned that if you say we do this every five years or every several, a couple of years, why don't we have?
We currently don't have a clerk here. Clerk would normally be the one that would maintain all those records. We don't have a clerk.
Anything else? Hey, anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, so next is a cannabis ballot.
Okay, so this is another one of those items that we've been discussing for, for a little while now. And we are approaching a deadline to get this information. If council would like to, to put this on the ballot for the November, for the November election for residents to decide about the state cannabis facilities in the city. We are approaching a deadline. I believe it's in May, although I could be wrong. And so this is just an opportunity for once again to consider the, the draft charter amendment language provided in your packet. This was something that city attorney Baker had provided January, maybe February. And so this is just another opportunity for you to discuss this, this draft amendment. Make any changes or discuss any changes you may want to see. And to move this process forward, that's the way you can choose to.
Well, the date that's coming up, that's where it's nested applications.
I, no, that would be to get this language to the state for approval and inclusion on the November ballot.
But we also put a deadline on how long we were sunsetting the application process? Or did we just put that in?
Okay, okay, just one.
Yep.
Yes, so, so, and, and, you know, just for additional information, I guess, I mean, I, I know I've received several, I received several inquiries a week from different individuals in the cannabis field, whether they are cannabis facility operators or more recently, I have been getting, I've been receiving phone calls and emails from our commercial property owners that have been approached and in some instances have agreements in place with these cannabis facilities. You know, whether it is to purchase property, to lease their property, have partnerships. And, you know, there's a lot of concern about the uncertainty, at least from their perspective. And just, I just want to make you aware that this is, this is making several of our commercial property owners very nervous, to say the least. And, you know, just have that in the back of your mind as you can continue to discuss what you'd like to do with cannabis.
Sure.
Which businesses have been approached?
For, we, for businesses. Uh, no, I cannot provide you that information. I, I. I, I understand, but that is, one, not something that I am necessarily recording. These are private, these are private, these are private negotiations between private individuals. The city is not involved in that. Yeah, I wouldn't, I, that's not, that is not information that I have.
But it is important our residents know that we may not know exactly where this might be, like behind your house.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
I'm saying if we move forward, those are some things that are obstacles that might be.
That would be if, if council chooses to move forward with cannabis, I think that those locations will be identified. Those locations will be known very quickly. But right now, I can, I am comfortable saying that every property owner along Southfield Road has more than likely been contacted and had conversations with someone from the cannabis industry over the last two and a half to three years. Whether that property is in an eligible zoning district or not. The cannabis industry folks are very eager for information and they are very diligent in finding locations that may suit both their needs and that particular property owner's needs. So.
It's their problem in Berkeley, it's a problem in our local. Difficult situations in New York because residents don't, so they might say you voted for it, vote cannabis.
I don't disagree, Councilwoman Kness. I, I'm just saying, no, I know, I'm just, I, and again, I, I just want to reiterate that these are locations that we would know if and when council chooses to move forward. But just for the purpose of this discussion, I don't have that information.
Involved in approach, not just businesses, but we've all been approached by, I think everyone else has. That's no, he can't, and I, I mean, the gentleman that were here last time, I think that contacted every single person that's on, but it's not you, has contacted everybody on council. They let you know who they called and talked to. So, but as soon as we decide on what we're gonna do, of course, I think that that will be very important to tell the residents exactly what these are gonna be located. They should know it. Who makes sure we make notes?
Yeah, that was required. I think it's been important for the discussion point tonight and at the next meeting. I think council needs to, to make a determination of how they want to proceed going forward. Do they want this to appear on the ballot as a charter amendment? Do they want to, to appear on the ballot as an ordinance consideration? Do they not want to put it on the ballot? Do they want to move it forward with an application contingent upon the higher government administrator? I think there needs to be some clear direction, not only with that, although it's gonna be necessary for me to be able to get the appropriate paperwork prepared. But it's also going to be, I think it's gonna be important for not only the industry, but also your existing commercial property owners because they will have a sense of direction as to which way. That, that's, I think, what we're looking for discussion-wise and also decision-wise within the next, you know, this meeting and then I started, I agree with you.
And then we discuss that as a council, we felt so.
You could do that too, yes. But again, that's, I mean, there's a lot of different options and avenues that council could take. But there have got to be any real discussions about which way council is leaning or looking, the advantages, disadvantages. That's, that's what I think is why this is on the agenda, so that council can have that discussion. You know, that's toward that city. So, but we're, we're making sure we keep the ordinance in place and make sure that no one can do that. Yeah, I mean, it's currently in place. I would like to have something, some ordinance on our, you know, stack, we don't have books. Should prevent, except the possibility of facility opening without certain, so, but there are, there are ways that we could do. If this council wanted to renew ordinance, we can work on a revised version of the ordinance with, without making the modifications to the existing one until the modified ordinance is there. We, so, but again, those are, you know, some, some of the new members, I mean, this is something that we worked on for a while over a year to get to the point where we're doing that. To have a final product, eighteen months.
Yeah, several.
So it was, it wasn't something that was just a whole, but that, that is one option that council could pursue.
Before you begin, Councilwoman Kness, can you move your mic up a little bit higher, closer to your color? We can't hear you. Thank you.
Okay, I went to several websites with cities. Wanted to see what their ordinances were regarding marijuana. I got one from Beverly Hills, from Birmingham, from Farmington Hills, from West Bromville. All of five pages, most of these are one-sentence ordinances. And I don't know if any of these have had problems with, because these, with people trying to come in or, you know, their cities without, I mean, they're very simple. And then I look at ours, what we've done.
Well, this is what ours used to look like before we developed that.
Wow, and I'm wondering, why did we do this when we had that?
Because we were getting pressure from cannabis facilities to operate. We were getting requests to have facilities in the city. And then a subcommittee or did some investigation and recognition that the city adopted ordinance allowance. So that's why we transitioned. And yeah, some of those committees have received valid, initial valid challenge from, out language from cannabis.
But they have been able to overcome them, just in standard ordinances. I haven't seen any in any of these.
That may be true currently, but that doesn't mean that there aren't more to come or that they won't have to continue to progress that question.
Well, but you have, Emily will say this, if I can interject. Councilwoman Kness can make the motion in the next meeting to repeal it if she wants to, right? Yeah, we can make the motion if that's what you choose to do. And our, you know, Monday, not two minutes?
Yeah, two minutes. Okay. Would like input from residents?
Um, we don't do the back and forth.
No, no, not here. I'm saying residents, but all of us know your opinion. You can email any of us, call any of us.
Yeah, but you, I mean.
I'm representing our residents. I'm not representing our.
I don't think anyone's actually saying bust the rest of the residents, but what I'm saying is that you can make a motion on Monday to repeal it or however you want to do it. But right now, we're trying to go through the ballot language because I was the last one that we talked about was trying to get this on the ballot. So the residents can make the decision of whether or not they want to have marijuana in the city. So you want to, oh, finish with the.
No, I mean, I'm just really, I'm looking for feedback or inputs or, or having a discussion, I mean, about what, I mean, what each council member would like to see and how they would like this to.
Regarding the ordinance that you just put together.
Or any of it. Regarding cannabis and no.
Yes, you developed a charter amendment that you gave to us. What, what was the purpose of that as opposed to ordinance or?
In part, it was, on my part, it was, the permanence of the charter. It's very difficult to, to change the charter. So if the, if the residents, you know, it's gonna, if, if this is what ends up on the ballot in my mind, it's gonna be very clear to residents. So if we approve this amendment and opt, and opt out under our charter, there is not gonna be cannabis. It's, it's going to be very difficult. Now, if the residents come back and say, no, we. Now, if the residents come back and say, no, we don't want to let our charter out, no, then it, it's equally going to be very clear that they do want cannabis. So I think, from that sense, and again, it's protecting, you know, should the residents decide and choose that they don't want cannabis, it's protecting them from having, you know, every time another council gets elected, they could flip flop back and forth, and not only does that, um, create havoc and stress on your local business community, which is a part of, you know, they'll, most of them don't live here, but, but they are part of your community, the business property owners, um, but it's also putting your residents to realize stress in terms of what, you know, is it legal here now, is it not legal here, and I have to worry about this in the future, but I think it just, it solidifies the standard. It gives it some level of permanence, one, one way, and that's just my.
Um, and the, the data, if this is what we end up doing, that day, probably they would be worried for, you should lock that in, who has any information?
Absolutely, it's, uh, well, it's, I think it was, people, it's me.
I thought we discussed May, but we still needed to finalize that, because there was a few, there was a few different, um, dates for, there was like the August one, perfect, thank you.
Can you go over what, exactly what our options are? What are, what are our options, we, besides, you know, leaving it where it is and opening up the application process, that's option one, then what are, what other options are available here?
So option, option one, as you said, would be to resume the application period at some point where the city has the adequate staff to handle that, because it is going to be a, a lot to undertake, uh, just to process that work. That would be option one, I suppose option two would be to do nothing, leave, leave the ordinance as it is and, uh, leave the current application period closed as it is currently. What that would do is that would remove any cannabis facilities from operating, because they're not able to comply, so that would just, uh, and then that could be changed at any point in time going forward by a residential council, so if council were to say, we're, we decided we're going to start taking applications on this, they could, or they could open up an application period and then pursuant to the ordinance, the, all the procedures and steps would then take place prior to council issuing license, the final license approved, that, that process would play out. Is option three would be, uh, we'll call it the best, the charter amendment ballot initiative, opt out, again, that, my recommendation would be to leave what is, uh, currently there, leave it there until the election, um, depending on the outcome of the election, either this charter, if this term had were adopted and cannabis was precluded, then now, any, oh, any ordinance would be repealed, then replaced with, uh, similar language to what we previously had, uh, without the sunset provision. Our previous opt out didn't have a sunset provision, and it, which, you know, that after a period of time, the ordinance ceased to be effective. It was, it was basically a control aid for councils, so that they couldn't just put this off, definitely, they had to address it prior to the expiration of that sunset. Option four now would be, uh, to have councils revise the current ordinance, they could make language changes or whatever changes they would like to do there, either the zoning ordinance, the general ordinance or, uh, the storing matrix. Wasn't really the, or, yeah, I think that's all.
Or council just maybe later, maybe the decision is out of option.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, council could, like I said, council could.
That would be the ordinance amendment.
Yeah, they could then the ordinance to say, we're opting out permanently. And, you know, rescinding the existing ordinance and substituting it with, with an opt out.
As a, um, the amendment, that's just going to be voted on by us, we don't have to use the signatures, right?
Right, I guess that's a fifth option, um, if the residents themselves were to submit a petition, what do you get on the ballot, council could either, depending on the language, and this, if there's any residents thinking of doing this, I would highly recommend you consult with a municipal attorney or someone that has some background in preparing, uh, property or petition in that language, because whatever you submit is, is what the city would be stuck with, and I say stuck with, because there have been communities where a ballot proposal comes in and it has language that may not have been crafted as thoroughly as what, what we prepared, and then the city can't, can't change that, because it was enacted through a ballot initiative, so make sure that you, you consult with someone that has experience doing that, make sure that everything is, is included in there. So if, if the council receives a sufficient citizen petition, they can either accept the, the language that the citizens have provided, uh, and enacted, or they can submit the question to the electors in the next election, so that will be, that's option five.
Well, shouldn't they have been placed this? Would you love? Would this be a point on a, on a ballot?
They could.
So the wording for that petition to place a left slated initiative, the proposal in the November general election ballot filed, that one has to be filed with the Secretary of State with the ballot signature, right? So that's due by June first, if anyone wants to, uh, do a ballot initiative.
I thought it was May.
Right here, it says for the word count, ballot wording of county and local proposals to be presented. I know that's for August, that's from August. This is a place county and local proposals on the hook that August.
You have to put it in, it has to be approved, I believe, and then you find the committees and all that things.
Absolutely. I don't think it's wrong to act in here. If you don't want to, um, research and tell us that the, uh, next meeting, I'm looking at right now, uh, the Michigan. So, this is on the Secretary of State site, it is under SOS elections, candidate information, dates and deadlines. Then under date and deadlines, calendar of elections dates, twenty twenty-two, Michigan, alert.
Keep the ballot, there's a section, time can be. So we want the date to submit this, if we get enough feedback and this is where the residents want to go, that would be the date we need.
Wait, can you say that one more time?
So we're looking for the date that Susan Conference will be giving the meeting, when we need to submit this proposal to go on the ballot, but I have two questions. This has to be filed and knownized and everything, is Calda going to be, the clerk, or is, she'll be, it says it all has to go through the clerk?
Right now, Calda is acting as, but it remains to be seen whether or not we'll have an official clerk. By that point in time.
And the A city clerk, will that make a difference, who's taking care of this for us?
I, the city attorney Baker, does that make difference, if it's acting city clerk or city clerk?
You know, in the absence of an actual clerk, uh, the duties would, would revert back to the administrator, and in the absence of an administrator, um, the interim administrator then have that ability to tell you, it's not an ideal situation, um, but we are actively searching for a clerk. Not great on that is, but, um, some, someone has to do it, if the interim, there has to be a, a person serving that, I ask you.
This is fine, you just need help.
Yeah, I, it's.
Um, May.
So I see, I'm looking at August second.
I was just going to say, I think I found.
Sorry, but yeah, there was the August second one, but then the, when you were saying about the ballot wording, and then when I saw also about having to have, um, the signatures on it, so.
There's, uh, also August sixteenth ballot wording of county and local proposals to be presented at the November general election certified to county and so, local clerks, local clerks receiving ballot wording for to county clerk within two days, so that would be our, August sixteenth.
We just did a charter amendment. Or, uh, November, that'd be the same thing, I believe that had to be approved by.
Yeah, that, so a charter amendment has, that would have to be, yeah, has to be sent to the governor's office, you guys can send it to the general's office. They have to weigh in on it and then respond to that, that's why I, I think it's earlier than this August date, because there's some back and forth, um, but I, I mean. I'll be.
Okay, and then we just, uh.
Thank you. Anything else for the cannabis ballot language?
Yes, maybe let our residents know how it's spotted, um, so they can read it.
It's on the agenda packet that is, it's on the agenda for today and it's on the left side.
So, oh, this is actually on.
It's very agenda packet, that's what's up, but, any other, any other questions regarding? Well, I, so I, question, I, just because I know, um, attorney Baker had said, I mean, like, are we, I'm getting the sense then that charter amendment and putting it on the ballot, that's, that is the way that council wants to move forward, no consideration of the other four options?
I personally like it this way, because it gives the residents the option since that, you know, that's really what everyone wants. Residents' opinion, so I think this is the way for every, the residents to be able to speak.
Okay.
It's proper information they need, and they can make the vote, and we can move forward from there, and I think the actual language is simplified enough to where no one would get confused with the, with their yes or their no, so, uh, me personally, I don't have an issue with your proposal for, um, the, the ballot question, so, um, I wish I could give you more feedback, because I thought it was pretty clear and concise.
And that's what we tried, you know, when Barb asked, because this was prepared, uh, as a request initially, I think it was done in January, uh, you can ask for something that's simple and straightforward and not, not confusing or misleading, uh, and that's, and that's why it was really a simple, it's like, it could make it so, um, and I think that, that like, number, it's, it meets the objective, right? You're trying to get, uh, response to the temperature of your residents.
Any, so, so, something else about the cannabis, uh, moving to discuss some items, see the interim city administrator update.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, just wanted to give you an update on the, um, proposals we've received for the elevator that needs to be, uh, worked on. Quotes are coming in anywhere between, uh, twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand. I'm looking at the middle quote, which is sort of Cone Care, which is a company that we currently contract with for maintenance. They're only, um, even though they're the middle quote, they're only six hundred and twenty-nine dollars higher than the lowest quote, so that's right now who we're looking at going with, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer for you. Correct. Correct.
And also.
From what they've done so far, and they've, they've been very responsive every time I've asked for an update. Unfortunately, this has gone on for quite a while, so with labor costs and, uh, material costs, the quote continues to rise as we wait, so actually, they were up at twenty-five, they came down to about nineteen-two, it was at nineteen-eight, and now they're at like twenty thousand five fifty-seven.
That also is money that you approved through the ARPA funds.
Yep. Nothing, I was, I was waiting for a third quote, it's been, uh, a, a challenge, to say the least, to try to get that, it's taken about three months to get three quotes.
Uh, yes, I just want to make you all aware of two different open houses that we will be having this week. Uh, we will be having on, let's see, on Wednesday, we are having an infrastructure open house, it'll be over in Meeting Place, six to eight P M. Uh, myself and a handful of representatives from Gimples Webster Engineering will be there, uh, to discuss any and all of the infrastructure projects, uh, answer any questions, we'll have some F A Qs, we'll have some maps, we'll have all sorts of information, so that will be happening again on Wednesday from six to eight, uh, in the meeting place, which is the room on the other side of, uh, the second floor. Um, and then we will also be having, uh, Oakland County's Business Forward Open House, uh, will be happening on Thursday from four to six down in Meeting Place, and that is an opportunity for, uh, the business community and residents and any entrepreneurs, whether they are existing entrepreneurs, uh, expanding entrepreneurs, wannabe entrepreneurs, they want information, need some assistance, um, that'll be their opportunity to learn about, learn a little bit more about the business board program, uh, meet Jamar and, um, and forward that way, so, um, I hope, I hope you all can. That is Thursday, the seventh, from four to six P M down in the community room.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's a flyer on Facebook already, right?
Yes, there's a flyer on Facebook, uh, registration, um, is encouraged, strongly encouraged on Eventbrite, um, that, that's all, um, on, uh, definitely on the D D A's Facebook page, it was also included in the e-newsletter, uh, no registrations required for the infrastructure. We'll just be happy to, happy to chat with everyone, so, yes.
Well, either it's me on Facebook or.
Recorded? No, these are in-person only.
If somebody couldn't make it, there wouldn't be any way for them to find out when they have them, or?
They can always, um, I mean, they can always email me or give me a, give me a call, uh, again, all this information will be available on the city's website, once the, once the events are completed, um, but these are in-person events.
How many people does the community room?
Meeting place of the community room.
How about, yeah, about fifty. The meeting place, the staff room is the, yeah. For, I mean, for, I mean, it's, we're not going to have tables and chairs, I mean, it's, it's going to be an open house, right? So we'll just have, um, have some display boards, um, perhaps, you know, some tables with, uh, handouts that are available, um, but it's, it is possible to have an open networking type of event.
I think that would be, you know, considering all the people with concerns about their roads.
Well, it's a two-hour event, so, um, it's going to have to be, we do have other events in the community room, which is why we're up in the meeting place, so.
There's more events there, what's, what's ahead?
Yes, so, um, but we wanted to make sure that we had this before the, uh, construction work begins, and that's technically scheduled for April fifteenth. Uh, provided we don't get bothered like we did today, so, um, we'll have to make it work, right? I'm good, I'm good.
Anyone else have any questions? Who, the muddy, wet mess behind the church, is anything I've been asking, or what's going on over there?
Are you talking about the Monterey, the road? Nothing can be done for the dirt roads right now because of, because of the frost loss, right? The, the muddy, the muddy mess, I mean, that's, in order for us to lay down any sort of stone or gravel that would really make a difference and not, you know, get rid of those potholes and the bulk of that mess. Laying down that stone won't work right now, it'll just make it worse.
Where's that water supposed to go? It's been, it's been there for like a week.
Right. Right.
You're saying that's all the road?
I, I'm not saying, I, I don't know if it has anything to do with drainage. I'm just saying that right now, if we were trying to lay, lay stone to make to try and braid that out, it would just, it wouldn't work, right? Yeah.
Talk about the road. It's, it's, yeah, somebody looks like, I mean, it looks like a running river at one point. I don't, I don't.
I haven't seen those pictures. So I'm sorry. I wasn't.
I, I can look into it tomorrow. I haven't seen photos yet either.
Who's responsible? Is that a mess that the consumers made or, you know, what's, but it's not the road. It's just a huge area that's.
Take a look at it tomorrow and try to give you a response then.
Any other questions?
At the last meeting, I asked about the Hawk signal crossings and whether that was ARP funds we're going to use. You said no, except in October, November, December and January reports, it says C E D has submitted a request for ARP state level funds to install Hawk signal crossings. That's where I had seen it and that was why I asked the question.
Oh, that we are, there is, I mean, there's a wider level of A R P funds, but this D D A is not pursuing the city's ARP funds to, to install Hawk signals. We have, like I said in, in our last meeting, we have budgeted one. We have, we are pursuing additional grant funding through the state for three additional ones.
But this is ARP state level funds. These are, these are your reports.
Yeah, I understand. And I, and that that is, and there, there are state level funds that are not particularly allocated to one community or another.
Oh.
Right? So we are pursuing those funds for a Hawk, for Hawk signals, but we've not, we've not yet heard a successful announcement of grant funds for that. So the D D A is going to.
About the same ARP money that we're putting in our.
No, no, no. And the D D A purposely did not pursue or even request any funds from the city's allocation of four hundred twenty-ish. We, we offered council to manage a, a grant program for home-based businesses if that was an avenue that council wished to pursue. But that was, that was only that, just an offer. That was something that council wanted to do. That was not, obviously, that was not something that we presented to you in December as something that we wanted as a project we thought would be a good use of the funds, considering some of the other things that we have. We have meetups. So the D D A is not looking for any ARP funds. We're doing quite well.
Also, I'm in the women's pub meeting today and Officer Amanda Carmack spoke about personal protection and scams. And she shared a lot of helpful information and there's information that's available to residents, brochures, on phone scans and things to look out for. She's said the current scams are I R S calls, utility scams, car warranties, charitable organizations, groups and people asking for payment with gift cards, Amazon emails. And then things that we should be aware of. There's been quite a bit of auto larceny in areas around us. So make sure that you lock your car doors. These are just going and checking to see what doors are open and just, you know, taking money and things that are left in the car. Make sure that your address is usable for police and fire. And also, did you know that Lake Village Police will do vacation checks when you move out of town? And don't give your credit card info to anybody that calls you directly. So that was it. So a great presentation and given us information available for residents to pick up. They are also collecting items, items for the V A hospital and addressing Goodfellow Dogs. That's something that they've been doing for about forty years of this. When they are looking for new members, their next meeting is May second and there will be a high tea in the congressional offices. Last of all, I have talked to several people about this, but I put in a request for five FOIA's last Thursday, asking for various information, some information we've been trying to get for quite some time. And I hope that I'll be able to do that, but I got an email this afternoon from Kell was saying that it's going to cost four thousand five hundred dollars. So to let her know if I want to continue, I would have to pay half of that amount upfront. So not sure how that amount was derived and, you know, what are their avenues there are to get some of the information. Answer that or?
That estimated cost is based on the hourly wage of the person that is the, the hourly wage of the person that is capable, most capable of doing the work requested. In this case, that individual is Pam Brachi. So.
What was the estimate on, what's the rate? What's the estimate on, estimate on hours?
Those are, we are estimating approximately eight hours a day. So a full week to do forty hours worth of work. Those are five very detailed requests. And in order to ensure that we have all of the information requested, that's, that is our best estimate at this point.
And some of that information that I do have to go to the basement, which is closed off due to toxic mold, but I do have to go down there to get the information for you.
That's good speaking of that. What is, that happened a little bit ago and what are the plans for taking care of that? Because there's multiple, multiple things down there that, that you can't get access to.
So I currently have two quotes for remediation. Third one was supposed to be here today. It still isn't here. So I'm hoping in the morning we'll have that third quote. Depending on where that falls, we may make an insurance claim to have it corrected. It just depends on the, the dollar figure.
And.
I have two quotes. About forty five hundred dollars. They're going to remove a portion of the ceiling. It's gonna, they're gonna wash the, the walls, the, the, the wood studs, clean everything up and then replace the ceiling and hopefully paint it as long as we get, I'm making sure that all the quotes are the same. So I want to bring it back to where it actually was. Well, they're going to bring in HEPA filters and, and court it off. There's a number of different processes that they're going to have to do to, to make sure that it's okay. We haven't gotten that far.
Is there an option if it's an emergency situation that you don't have to get through?
Yeah, there's an emergency situation that they could, the city could administer to act, you would expect beyond two to five thousand hour spending threshold without a Google Council without getting.
Unfortunately, when you're dealing with this, this is my first time trying to deal with the mold, mold remediation. The amount of information is ridiculous and the, the amount of contradictory information makes it very confusing. So to me, it's actually better off for the city to actually get the three bids and let's see where we go from here. And that's the other thing that, the other caveat to this is because I'm not sure when that basement was constructed. We're also going to have to get the drywall and drywall and paint tested for, for lead and asbestos. So, but the good thing is the mold remediation actually has a higher threshold, so to speak, that, that they clean the air higher, they have higher standards than the asbestos companies. So it'll all be inclusive and we'll, we should be, they should be able to handle all of that, but they are going to test.
For mine house, it was a combination of throwing things away and what they would be.
Do they, who can tell you what you, or do you decide or how would you decide?
The Jazz company, because I stand in the company that you also let me know how to include something would be advisable or not.
Well, again, we're, we're taking it as a step approach tomorrow. Hopefully I have the third bid and we'll decide then if we're going to call the insurance company. And then if the insurance company gets involved, then obviously they're going to start telling us what we need to keep, what we need to clean and what we can discard.
And we keep.
It, yes.
And we keep all of our records down there because we have no storage for, so all of our paper records are downstairs in the basement.
But they haven't necessarily been destroyed. It's just you can't go down there because of the mold and the access.
Correct.
Any other?
Well, I'll just give a little quick update. As I promised, I went to the Simcoag meeting in Harrison Township, which is the southeastern Michigan Council of Government. And they have, they provided some really good resources for us. They also have things like the electric vehicle resource kit and planning hub that I would like to talk to or just share that with you so you can share with the planning.
No worries. We're already on it.
Yeah, okay. Cool, cool. So they just, they've really provided some good resources that I plan to share with the community and administration as well.
Can I tag in there for just a second? Because that was a great, we actually have a public hearing scheduled for April nineteenth, which is this month's, obviously this month's planning commission meeting for electric vehicle charging station ordinance. And we did very specifically look at what Simcoag has put together. I know myself and a couple of the other planning commissioners attended their, their recent E V charging meeting seminar, webinar. So, yes, so we're on it for you. Anything else? Open up the public comments. Public comments are are just for the public to comment. It's not a dialogue between the council and the general public. However, I want to actually. He gives the public comments and what the council can do is if somebody wants to. My point is that public comments are supposed to be before mayor and council conference. So it's better if that's not.
Sorry.
Yeah. So anyway, um, it, yeah. No, in the three minutes for each person. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lea Maitinen. I'm resident. I noticed there's a bunch of people here. I mean, whatever, a handful, there's like ten. And several of them have no cards. I heard from a concerned resident that there was a movement this weekend on Saturday of some residents. And also councilperson Kenaz and councilperson Miller. And they, I don't know, came up with like a scheme where they're all going to read no cards. And I just think like, you know, we've heard, we've seen this like on a national scale before. We have like, some people just, if you say anything that they don't like, they attack you personally. You know, councilperson Miller has accused me and my family, including my children, four, four and six, of being involved in some political conspiracies against. Councilperson Kenaz's husband will be at a meeting after he did one of my comments that I should take my kids and leave. And so it's just this whole attitude, you know, conspiracy about this. Bruce must be coming up with something crazy because somebody asked him to find information. Random claims of election fraud that have been disproven by, you know, it's just, we don't need that here. We have real issues here. We have real things that are happening and, and we need to be working together and working forward and moving forward. We're putting time and effort into these tactics to divide people and just bring people down. That's a waste of time. That's a waste of resources. That's not what we should be doing here. And I saw, you know, there's people who are like, well, there's, it's just a sewer. There's water backing off. Why don't we have a plan to deal with this? Well, there was a plan to deal with that in the one of twenty nineteen and they got voted down. And councilperson Miller was very proud that she led the charge to turn that down. So, I mean, wherever, there's people are concerned about things. There's things that need to change. There's things that need to get better. Need a city manager. We need a city clerk. We need to have all the positions staffed in the city. It makes sense to me, but there, there's people on the council who want those positions to be unfilled, who don't want administrative spending, who ran on a platform of, you don't need as many people working in the office. We don't need them to be paid as much as they're being paid. And we can see that things are not running as smoothly. We have three people doing, I don't know, seven people's jobs here who are stressed out, who you come into this meeting and you can see tears on people's eyes. You can see people's hands. You can feel the anxiety in this room. And it's, and, and people have, people have written in their exit interviews of the toxic environment here and it's just.
Thank you. Ask forward.
Hi, first I want to start by saying this is wonderful, being in this room together with you. Thank you for making that happen. That's awesome. And I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I got here a little bit late, but I did want to talk, I heard Jalen speaking and I'm sort of right with you, Jalen, about getting the pot thing on the ballot for November. And maybe, you know, I know this is not a question and answer, but I feel like there's been a lot of talk and I'd love to know, is it going to be on our November ballot? Has that decision been made? I sure hope so. Because I'd like to see the citizens be able to vote on the hot dispensary, whatever, agenda and have a voice in there. Because I think that, that's the only way I think we're going to settle this. And everyone's going to feel really comfortable. Because I'm telling you, as much as I don't want one in the city, if the vote said every, you know, the majority did, I would say, hey, that's life. You know, that's democracy and people get to vote and make decisions. So that's me registering. And really, it's so good to be here with you guys. I do want to say that. Be here in person.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay.
I'm Susan Armason. I'm at two eight two five two Woodworth Way. Longtime resident, thirty-six years this year. And I just want to also reiterate Nancy's comment. And I just want to also reiterate Nancy's comments about being very positive about the fact that there should be language on a ballot for the residents to vote on. Jalen, you commented on that. I think, I hope that that's the direction that we go in and I strongly support that, that initiative. And giving our residents a chance to actually speak up and feel that they've had a voice in that decision as far as whether we want marijuana facilities in our community. And I have to say, I don't agree with Elaine's initial comments. As she started out with all of this, I think that there are a lot of positive things that are happening. And I think that it's really important that people express their opinions and get their concerns on the table. And that there are a wide variety of opinions that need to be heard so that they can be an objective and reasonable and fair decision that ultimately gets made when decisions get made about what's best for the city and what's best at the health of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Anyone? Then I will take a moment.
I was waiting, because I thought we were all here to, to say something.
I'm Lori Coons here to voice my opinion on the cannabis ballot. And I do believe it should be on the vote in November. And um, I still have a problem with the language. And I think you addressed this, because we don't have a city clerk. And the city clerk shall transmit a copy of the proposed amendment to the governor. Now, how can we count on this? Well, first of all, what is the filing date? We never, did we ever come up with the filing date that this proposal has to be submitted?
So they're going to provide, they're going to provide the filing date and we'll post it on the website and then it'll be at our next meeting.
Okay. Because I'm worried without um, a city clerk, this form is very particular and needs to be filled out accordingly. And that would be a perfect, this, you know, excuse for it to not get put on the ballot, because it won't be done properly. And then um, the other option I wanted to mention. I appreciate the open meeting here today. But I heard there's a, a meeting at Panera for the council members to come, or neighbors to come to. And.
Tonya, and I apologize, I totally forgot to say that. So yes, um, it's something that we talked about, I think, within November that starting, I'm thinking for stopping it. April 11th, uh, we will be up at Panera at six o'clock. And everyone is invited to be there to talk about whatever you want to talk about. And it's something that, well, it came out of Karen's suggestion about having those kind of like town halls. So the appropriate thing is not to have it on city property. And so that's why it will be over there.
I, I was just thinking along the lines of these open meetings and I'm glad to be here, but I was hoping to be like downstairs in a big room with more people could come.
So, and then let me address that, because we did start to stop. We did get your request to be downstairs. There will be a actual technical blueprint of what it will take to be downstairs. And it is a price involved with that, which would have to be approved by the council. Because we have to get various equipment and Jim has explained this to us before. But I have asked him to have it completely written out, so we can share it with all the residents and then we'll make a decision there.
And I think I missed it. One little thing about requesting that the listed buildings that have been solicited by cannabis buildings, businesses. You said you don't pay up, they asked, correct? But if I know that certain people have said that they've been approached. My doctor, for instance. I know you've raised building.
And you, you guys don't. That's not, no, I'm not, I'm not keeping, I, I do not keep records of what businesses or what commercial property owners have been. Approached, thank you. Approached by, by cannabis industry individuals. It's, one of the lists has become far too cumbersome. And that's, that's not the city's business at this point. I mean, that's something to be considered if one's.
Proposal that we could assume most. Property has been approached.
Yes.
All right, well, definitely it's important to get it on the ballot, so people can have a chance to say if they want it. And I should speak in defense of myself. I organized a meeting on Saturday, I rented the room myself, I paid for everything myself. And I invited neighbors and I wanted an input from them regarding what's happening in the city. If they were aware of clickbait, what they think about the roads. And I am not guilty of anything. And for her to accuse me of advising people or starting rumors, I'm very offended. And if anyone wants to talk to me about that, I'd be happy to discuss. I am not guilty of doing anything wrong.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to speak? And after you, sir, it will be Amy Warbes on. Okay.
Okay, Jay Bissensky, I'm a resident here. Um, I've grown up in Lathrop. I have, my family lives here, I have two little kids. And I want to see Lathrop become a place that I'm proud of. And I want my kids to, you know, stick around here for a long time too. To be a place that many people come back and raise their kids. I agree with Jalen. I think we need to have concise, clear language on the ballot about the marijuana proposal. Because I think that's going to dictate the fabric of this community. So I agree with you, Jalen, thank you. And uh, in regards to Karen Miller having the FOIA information, I think she is volunteering her time with city council, just as well as everyone else here. But it shouldn't be that difficult for her to get transparent information about what's going on in the city in the past too. And so she can have the best information possible to lead us going forward. That's all it is. So it shouldn't be that difficult. You guys can get it done, I know you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, um, Kate Miss Moore. And then Dawn Medley is after. She's still there, she's just nice to be on mute. Anymore. Miss Moore, you're available to talk.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Not really.
Uh-oh. Let's see, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I, this is going to be short and sweet, but um, I just want to say, I'm a Laker Village resident. And I agree with Jalen that the cannabis proposal should be on the ballot. Totally agree, thank you, Jalen. And I would also like to revisit uh, traffic issues. I know it's, it's been vacated, you know, it, it was talked about early on in the year, but um, it's really an issue, especially over here on Lathrop Boulevard. And um, finally, uh, councilman, council member Miller, I would like to thank you for, um, you know, letting, letting our voices be heard. I really appreciate it. And you guys keep up the good work, that's it.
Thank you. Dawn Medley.
Medley. Hey, there you are. Um, I'm a former city council member and I just wanted to say that I wanted to speak for the employees of Lathrop Village at this point in time. Karen Miller may be pretending that she is open and transparent. What she is, is behaving in a bullying fashion for the people who work in. And that's why there are so many vacancies. That's why, um, you know, Lathrop Village is getting the reputation is not a good place to be a municipal employee. And so what I would encourage Ms. Miller to do is to perhaps seek to understand and to slow down on the accusatory nature in which she addresses city employees, those with whom she works with on council. I think if she would embrace a teamwork approach and work with people, even when she disagrees with them, as opposed to accusing them of withholding information that sometimes is right there. If she would just simply seek to understand, I think that Lathrop Village would get a lot further down the road and, and move the agenda ahead. And so I know that city employees at this point are afraid to speak up because of the way they are being treated by city council member Miller. I just wanted to make sure that they were being heard and that their concerns were validated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Karen, then I'll take a German, a motion for a German. I thought you were letting people speak out. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the agenda, go ahead. My, my, oh, what did I notice? There was something, but go ahead, Karen.
I, I just wanted to say, my only agenda is to involve residents in the decision-making in our community. We are at the top of the organizational chart. They deserve to be included in the process and decide how their tax dollars are spent. I don't have any, there aren't any conspiracies going on. I never talked about anyone's children, even though that person was passing out awful flyers, slandering me. So again, I want to put residents at the top. I want residents to have a voice. I want to be transparent. And that's why I'm asking for information about things like the infrastructure committee study group and how that was formed and how this group of five to six people has determined how all over thirty million dollars of our budget is going to be spent. And really, I mean, that's it. I just want people to be able to be respected when they have a question, to have their questions answered, for someone to answer the phone, for someone to follow up with something. Now, it's great that you're having this infrastructure meeting on Wednesday night, but uh, this stuff has been going on for over a year. There should have been communication and, and how did this even come about? I saw, got a notice about it on Saturday night. I mean, we had our meeting, our, our Lori had her get-together. And, you know, a few hours later, we're, we have an infrastructure thing that no one had mentioned previously. So I, I mean, I'm glad, if that's what it takes to get things done around here, okay, great. But I am not trying to be disruptive. I'm committed to this community. We have so many people that are committed to this community. And I, I just, I just think that we need to be involved in the process. I, you know, respect people that respect me and, and it's going to say that. And, you know, while, while Ms. Medley is calling from New York, telling us how we should run this. You know, I have incidents where, you know, she was extremely rude to me. So this, working together and teamwork and, you know, respecting people. Same thing with Mrs. Mantenon, respecting people and all of that. I think that has not been, has not been the case. You know, you get respect if you're, you know, on one side of an issue. But we have so many people here that have so many of, of different perspectives and opinions and experience and knowledge. And instead of pushing people away and pushing people out, we should be tapping into the resources that we have here to create a community or, or keep this community going, so that people like Jay move back here and raise their children. I raised my children here and I wouldn't, there's no other place that I would rather them. And I want that to continue. And if we don't have open conversations and open dialogues and listen to different perspectives, different opinions, and, and we as the representatives of the residents, don't make our decisions based on what our residents tell us they want, then we will not continue to be the community that we are. And that's one of the reasons I decided to run, because I saw things falling apart. I saw that residents were not respected, residents were not at the top of that chart. And so I hope to try and make a difference in that respect. So. Keep every meeting, I keep getting hot shots, whatever. So again, I have no personal agendas. I'm here for the residents.
Thank you. Was there any, was I just going to make one comment? Go ahead.
In respect to the comment that just came in blaming Karen, I wanted to mention that it was extremely inappropriate for Bruce Cantor to use this platform to bash someone he, everyone who he was talking about. That was unfair, uncalled for, and really unprofessional. The room was full of people who were saying, what's going on? So in Karen's defense, I just want to say, I know she is trying for the people. She honestly cares about what's happening here. And I don't think she should be slammed in public.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Betty Ann Wright, I'm a forty-four year resident of the city and I've watched many city councils come and go. Up until the past four years and some things were brought to my attention. I wasn't happy, but I knew I didn't have a voice in council. You people have been voted in to represent the residents who pay taxes. Who would like to know where the money is being spent and how it's being spent. And Karen Miller, as councilwoman, I want to thank you for asking the questions pertinent that the residents need to know and want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something also. I'm Ann Ryan and I've lived here for forty, forty-three years. Karen is amazing and she asks questions. She, and she's always willing to talk out any problem or any situation with the resident. Keep asking questions, keep looking and digging, because that's how we're going to, we're all going to be on the same page eventually. Because we will all know the same knowledge and we'll all have an idea about what everybody's talking about. It's, I'm so glad that we could come in here today. I asked Kelly if that could be possible downstairs and you had said something about money. It's more expensive to be down there. And I think we're all worth it to be down there.
I, well, I will jump in and I would say the reason why we had not done it was because of that. And then I also refer to the fact of what we were going to do is put the whole technical spec together, because our council said they want to know where the money's going. So I thought the right thing to do is to show what would be needed to go into the community room. I one hundred percent agree with you in your email, which I said, I like to be downstairs also, very truthfully. And I told you that in your email.
You did. I don't understand, I, you did not list the things that would need to be done or to be paid for as a result of having the community come down to the community room.
What I said was, um, we have talked about moving our council meetings to the community room. And I do think that's a good idea. It was conveyed to me that there's an extra cost to doing this, but if that is what you think the community wants, then I think we should do it. I added the city administrator and Jim, the administrator of the LVTV to this email. They can respond and let you know what it takes to make this happen. If they can make it happen, then I'm all for it. So what it was is that I'm waiting for them to give me the pricing, the logistics and everything to share with all of council, so then we can move downstairs. So it's not that I didn't give it to you, I didn't have anything to give to you. But as I said, I wanted them to send it to you, so you would have the exact, the equipment that we needed, the bike that we needed, and that it will be, how it will be set up, because as you asked, you asked for people to come back in here, you're in here. I have no problem with it. I personally don't have a problem with it. So I don't want you to think that it was.
Yeah.
But I just don't want you to think that it was me stopping anything, because it's not. I just want you to be informed, just like what you're asking for transparency from all of us. And so as soon as I have it, as stated in the email, I will give it to you.
Okay, I believe you will. I, I, tell me again who last to be, um, who you need to speak with to.
Jim is, Jim is in the other room, stick your head, Jim. Stick your head in there, stick a needle.
Okay.
And he can also kind of explain to you what it takes to be downstairs. Because one thing, if I'm not mistaken, and Jim, I'm sure will correctly, there's something about the microphones being downstairs. There's something about taking these cameras downstairs and the whole board that they use that's up here is not wired downstairs in the community room. So it, it's more of a logistical and. So it's more of a logistical and cost situation. We have one cameraman down here, I mean, up here, but it's more that's going to be needed downstairs. So it's more to it than just take yourself and move it downstairs. So if you want to stick your head into sweet Jim, maybe he can give you some more information. I'm, I'm not tactically savvy when it comes to the TV part of it.
Okay, I just have known for many years that we, we've always gotten to council meetings.
So we didn't use to often do the Zoom stuff. You know, when we did move them downstairs, we didn't do Zoom, we didn't do Facebook. It was recorded and then it was put onto television. It wasn't a live situation. I mean, it was a live
You're talking about before the pandemic?
I'm talking about the way that, yes, the way we're doing it now is, is slightly different than what it used to be. Because I was here when we had them downstairs and it was recorded to TV, not for Facebook Live, not for, that was on Zoom.
Yeah, I watched the Zoom, too.
For YouTube, it wasn't on YouTube either.
I mean, that was special meeting, I'm getting right, I remember that. But I'm just saying, it's a little different that's going on there.
Mayor, I also know that when we are downstairs, we do have to rent additional equipment to be down there. Because we have had to rent it for the special meetings. I do know that, and Jim will probably say that, too.
Well, and that's what I'm waiting for, the email back. And then that's why I added them to your email in my response, so you can all get that information back.
I just think that more people would come if they knew they had the space and had the voice to speak with all of you, to ask questions, if we welcomed them downstairs with this space. We've done it for many, many years. I don't know why the financial issue comes into like, sure, it costs money. But heck, you know, if you want the residents to be part of, of the city and, and be involved, let's make it pleasant for them to come here.
Well, let's make it happen, let's find out what it is, and we'll do it. Thank you.
Who are cooler than we that's been having conversations about meetings for months?
I have been having several conversations with Jim over the last, I don't even know, every month of COVID. My, myself and, and Jim and former city administrator Mitchell Tyrrell. We have all discussed, ad nauseam and confusingly at times, what the process is, what we may be able to do to get the meetings downstairs. And, and it has been quite expensive. I, I can't tell you what the cost is off the top of my head, but I, I mean, it's, that has been the one thing that has repeatedly been the, the sticking point is that it is extremely expensive to move the, all, all of the equipment and all, like, all the, all the equipment, all, you know, the, the cost for the additional operators, camera operators and whatnot.
Sorry, Mary, that was my bad. You can, you can unmute yourself, Mary Lou.
Okay, hi, everybody. Greetings from Germany. I'm up in the middle of the night to watch what's going on. And I wanted to say that whether it's in the office there or in City Hall, or it's on Zoom, I appreciate being logged in and appreciate everything that you guys are doing. I'm very sad to see the divisiveness in this new council that I didn't see before. So although, you know, there's a lot of cheerleaders for the new council member, I've seen the other sides, too. But if we can move together and there's productive, like a productive journey forward, instead of always going backwards to find out where all the mistakes are. Okay, yeah, to a degree, that has to be done. But I'd like to see more progress and less inviting. So I can actually attest to what Dawn said earlier. I've talked to several people that had left the, the city, and I agree with her. They didn't want to work with Karen. So hopefully Karen can smooth out some of the prickly stuff and, you know, be a team player.
Be a team player, you know, this April 11th thing, ask the council person, Barb and I know absolutely nothing about it. So, you know, being a team and sharing information, whatever, that, that's the reality of it. I saw it in an email that Bruce sent to some, to Jason Hammond and whatever. That isn't anything that was ever shared with us. So when I asked about who is we, talking about how we hold our meetings, I remember asking December 6th downstairs, when do we have a discussion about what our meeting structure looks like? And I, that was, I don't know, that was about, I was gathered on, you know, multiple things. So, you know, I, but this, this facade of, it's just, you know, I won't work with people. But it's, it's just, it's not true. There's this, it's not true. Again, I have no idea what, what April 11th is about. And this is me and I mean, you said it was my idea, so that's great. I'm glad that you
was suggestion. You want, if you want me to explain it or don't worry about it. So Jason was, Jason Hammond was there.
Hey, everybody, can you hear me? So earlier during public comments, somebody mentioned the meeting this past Saturday and offered to speak with anybody who was interested about it, but they didn't mention their name. And I would like to speak with them about it. Is it possible to find out the name of the person that offered that?
Is there anyone else that wanted to make a comment?
All right, I didn't, I didn't hear the
I'm so sorry, Jason, that's true. Sorry. You want to know the name now?
Or somebody can let me know after the fact, that's fine. I just would like to know who that person is so I can engage with them.
Is that information you give out when people rent the community room?
He just asked, he just asked what someone just said, and I'm trying to figure out which one he's talking about. He asked, who was the person that said that they can get in contact with her? And I'm assuming that you mean Lori.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Lori Coons, I rented the room, and I'm happy to speak with you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Jason, I, well, this is Suzy, I, I can facilitate getting, exchanging contact information with you and Lori. And make sure you both have your conversation that you'd like to.
So, thank, thank you, appreciate it.
I just wanted to say, is there any reason why two of you can't move up here and just leave one there? And then we free up a lot of space in the room? I mean
I mean, this is just, this is, it's easier for the three of us to be together and, and have, and have this instead of taking up space. We also want to make sure that you all have adequate room to spread yourselves out. So I, you know
I'm just, if it's a big cost concern, we did use to meet here, and I think you could get about 30 chairs in here. When they first moved up And I think the city administrator used to sit up here, I don't know if he used to sit there. Anyway, it's just a thought. And then just with you, since you're kind of doing that part, maybe just give you a table right there. But that really opens up a lot of space and might save us some money. Thank you for the suggestion.
Any other, Donna? Well, I appreciate everybody showing up today, again, for April 11th over at Panera. We will, whoever would like to come can be there, just to kind of have like a, it's not, nothing scheduled, there's nothing, I'm supposed to say, no agenda is provided. And it's just kind of like a chat chat.
Mayor, what time is that at?
It's at six o'clock, I will be there. And Ruth said that he was going to come. But I don't know if he's going to be there, but basically, it's something that we talked about before, and you brought it up.
It's going to be an event where there's a quorum of council that needs to be
Yeah, that's what I, I'm hoping that they're gonna run with that.
Yes, of course.
So they're gonna post it, that way anyone can come. So it's not restricted to only two people being in the meeting. You know, that's why I left early, that's why I didn't walk all the way into the meeting on Saturday, because I knew that that wasn't posted and that would be a quorum.
Or it wasn't meeting.
So, no, whenever you're talking about anything, like, you know, the city administrator position and things like that are in what we needed to do, you know.
I'm so pissed off with Karen Miller, I can't get back to
Um, that would be still considered a quorum if three of us walked in. You know, if I was the third person that walked in there while y'all were discussing, you know, whatever, what it has to do with the city. So that's why they're opposed this way. But thank you. Was there something else you wanted to say?
No, I just want to make sure I heard, because I, I had a guest, invited guest, and I know about inappropriateness of council members.
Oh, I'm just, I'm not even talking about Saturday. I'm just saying, give me an example of why they need to post April 11th, because anybody can come. That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm trying to say.
Is there a, is there a schedule that, like, are you considering doing this, the council chats, like, once a month, every other week?
At least once a month. And just to try to get some camaraderie and some, some civility back in the, you know, and to be off like that one.
Okay. But there's no, that you, there's, we've not, a schedule that's not been devised, so, all right, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.